It's seven o'clock. This is the Sherburne zoning, Town of Sherburne zoning Board of Appeals. It's February 13th. I'm Rick Novak, or other board members are Todd Labby, Jonathan Fitch, and Zach. Where is Zach?
He's here.
All right. And he's here somewhere in the multitude. Are there any other boards here that would like to come to order so that they could be in compliance with public meeting? Law, open meeting law?
I may have to interrupt you because I don't see any other select board members right now. So if some join, I may have to find a breaking point to just quickly vote, but I don't see, do you see any others, Jeannie? I see Jeremy and
Jeannie, you're muted. And by the way, we're going to hold for a minute while Zach McBride logs off and logs back on. I saw him in the chat.
I don't see anybody else, Joe.
Okay.
No difficulties. Okay.
You got Stephen.
Okay.
Marion's here now also.
Oh, all right. Let's let them get logged in and then I can do a vote also. Stephen disappeared though. Did he still see him?
No, I'm still here.
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna open in a minute. I missed you. Now I got you. I play musical chairs and move everybody around.
Jeannie's doing that. She's just doing it to mess with us.
Yeah, yeah. I do it to keep myself going here.
Here's Stephen.
Where did Marion go?
I'm here.
Are you there?
Yes, I am.
I'm looking for you.
I'm probably on page three or something. No, this one.
Oh, there you are. I found you. I shuffle the deck to keep people close. All right.
Whenever you're ready, select board.
All right, I'll go ahead then. Do I have a motion from a select board member to open? A select board meeting?
I'm over.
All right. Second, Marion?
Yeah, second.
All right, roll call, Stephen.
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
I might as well. Thanks, Rick.
Okay. Board of Health, are you trying to come to order during our meeting?
We did not post because we did anticipate we'd have a court.
Okay, awesome. No, no, no problem.
We will just be representing.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to try to cover two subjects tonight. First is there's a new Washington Street 40B project. We're going to open that hearing tonight. We're not going to spend a lot of time on it. The development team has kindly offered to do a very short presentation. Under the rules of 40B, we have to open within a certain timeline of when they filed. And this date is within that timeline. So we're simply starting off the longer process. A number of people in the context of Greenwood asked whether the Washington Street project could be blocked because there are so many 40Bs going on in town right now. And my review of the regs is that we do not have that option at this time. We've got something like 3% SHI. And and if we had three or more projects going at the same time, they would also have to collectively be a large project, which I think for us right now would be over 150 units. Based on the size of our, the rest of our base. So I don't think that's a, that's a viable item for discussion. I did mention the context of Greenwood, and I think we'll just put it aside for now that there's a potential related filings issue. I know Mr. Haverty disagreed with me and we can, we'll just put that aside and deal with it as we move further into the discussion. And so with those housekeeping matters, I'll invite the development team to make their presentation for the Washington Street project. Please.
Did you, did you need to formally open it, Rick? Or are you all set on that?
I hereby, where's my magic scepter? I hereby opened the meeting by the, by all the powers vested in me, whatever. Yeah.
Well done. Thank you, everyone. Glad to be with you all again. Many of the same faces over the many months. Tonight, we're going to present briefly a different kind of project. You've heard me talk about it in the past. It's a deeply affordable project. It's all affordable. And in fact, speaking about 40B law and such, if this project receives a comprehensive permit, it's my understanding, and I'll let the lawyers clarify, but that the town will be in safe harbor for two years if this project is granted a comprehensive permit. As I said, it's a very different project from the other two that we've been working on. And I have a partner, or actually a partner firm, and really two partners, Dave Trigorth and Dan Hubbard. And Dave and Dan are going to present most of what we have to say tonight, but so I'll turn it over to them.
Thanks, Bob, and great to be with you guys tonight. I'm going to try and share my screen and I'll move quickly through this because I think a lot of it is in part of our submission. And, but we also just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce ourselves. We've worked with Bob for quite a number of years on a variety of different projects and are excited to bring our expertise here to Sherburne and I think deliver a really, really high quality, nice project for Sherburne and the larger community. So just to orient everybody as to where we are talking about tonight. This is down on Washington Street. The center sort of of Sherburne is right here at the intersection of 16 and 22, as you know. And so further down 16 here, you can see the little red mark. Just to orient folks. The addresses are roughly 121 to 129 Washington Street. It's about 14-point acres. It's got a lot of frontage. And where we're proposing the building is outside of the wetlands buffer with the nearest to Butters pretty far away. Just a little bit about us, we've brought on Union Studios in addition to Bob and ourselves. Dan Hubbard, I think, is on here tonight as well. And Union Studios, we've worked with before and just does a great job bringing high-quality design to these projects. We've also worked in a lot of different communities in Massachusetts. All of our work is in Massachusetts. We're working on a project in Winchester right now. We've completed a project in Hamilton through a public RFP process. We've done a bunch of work in Williamstown and Berkshires. Bob's done some work in Newton. So we've worked in a bunch of different jurisdictions. And thankfully, all places that have invited us to come back. Really pleased with that. I think many of you know Bob's project on Abbey Road, or called Abbey Road. Just a beautiful project here. We've worked out in Williamstown, as I mentioned, along the Green River across from Williams College. Doing the river lofts, which was for sale condominiums, along with this project, which was a 90,000 square foot mill, which had a decent amount of affordability in it as well. And we've also worked in Hamilton on the Willow Street flats. This project is 50% affordable. Had some ground floor commercial. This is right in their downtown district. This is on, in Worcester, right next to St. Vincent's Hospital, the historic renovation rehab that we did there. This project is 100% affordable and Chelsea just completed it last fall. And just a great, a great project right on the Mill Creek at the intersection of, you know, at the Revere border. And then we're working with Union Studios right now in Winchester on Waterfield. This was a public RFP process. This is almost, this is more than 80% affordable. And they're publicly owned lot right next to the MBTA station downtown. So just a little bit of what we're working on. We've got a lot more as well, but I won't go too much further. And our goal here is to create high-quality homes that are affordable and energy efficient, that have really great, great access to a lot of amenities. I think I don't have to tell everybody here that we've got some of the highest housing costs in the country and it's became, become even a bigger issue across the nation. Where so many people are rent burdens, housing payment burdens. And I think this project provides additional supply, which is important to bring the costs overall down. The restrictions that will be on it in perpetuity will guarantee that it continues to remain affordable to families. And it'll certainly increase the tax revenue to the town for this parcel. Just a real quick summary, kind of by the numbers, it's about a $21 million investment. There's 40 rental apartments. Again, 100% will be affordable. 62 parking spaces. 235 kilowatt hour solar production capacity. So huge solar arrays. You'll see, we've got about 75% open space. And four public water supply wells as well. So really sustainable, high-quality project. And when we talk about affordability, that can mean a lot of different things in a lot of different places, but what it means here is a mix of 60% and 30% AMI area median income units. Right here is what I'm showing on the 60% area median income because the 30% area median income is really based upon the income of those individual families. And so it's hard to kind of give a bracket. But to talk about the 60% AMI units a little bit. We'll have 14 one-bedroom, 14 one-bedroom units. And our rent for those is really no more than about $1,700. And a family that kind of can afford that is about making about $62,000 to $71,000 a year. Two bedrooms, we've got 22 of those, a little over $2,000 a month in rent. And that, those will be affordable to families qualifying in about $71,000 to $90,000 in area median, or in family income, apologize. And then four three-bedroom, $2,300. And those again will be affordable to a family earning between 80 and $103,000. The area median income for this, for the Boston Metro MSA, as they call it, is about $150,000. And so it's gone up a lot in the past couple of years and continues to climb. And just for reference, I couldn't sort of put in there what Dover Sherburne teacher's starting salary is. Think the average is about $100,000. I think the starting is about between 50 and 60,000. So quickly to run through these, these are with the submission, so I won't spend a ton of time and we can certainly reference them if you like, but you can see here just the breakdown of units. And if I blow up on this, here's Washington Street at the top, and you've got the driveway coming in. You can see the parking. And you can see the solar. And the building is right here, if you can see my cursor. And so you can see, this really doesn't show the whole parcel, but much of the parcel is being, is remaining wooded. And as you can see it here, this red line is that property line. So even this, as we zoom out, is really leaving that untouched. There we go. These just show the general floor plans. There's going to be some nice porches, screened areas, nice common areas as well. You can just see sort of the general layout of how the units will work. All of these will be served by an elevator. Single level living, so people who live here will not have to deal with any sort of stairs if they have any mobility issues. And these will have the requisite number of handicap accessible units as well. And as you just move up through the building, you could see sort of how it's set back, sets back as we see in the elevations. You'll see that how the third floor is a bit smaller than the top, than the bottom two floors. So three stories in all, really nice units that have really large, wonderful kind of eat-in kitchens, lots of storage. And, you know, the requisite number of bathrooms for each unit type. And so I'm going to move through these quickly. You can see the solar array, which is pointed in an ideal location that's going to cover more than, than the electricity demand of this building. Much of what we're building these days is either nearly passive house or passive house. Project in Hamilton is passive house. And we're really pushing the envelope in terms of energy efficiency. And you can see some of the elevations here. This is the back elevation at the top. One of the sides elevation, side elevations below. This is the front elevation. And you can see it's sort of a typical New England architecture. And fibered siding to go along with it. So a couple of details, and I'm not going to go through the site plan. Just a lot of technical drawing. I'm happy to reference them if anybody has any questions, but I'll leave it there for tonight. And I appreciate the time.
That is a super fast and crisp summary, Dave. Thank you very much. There will be a million questions and Dave, I know you and your team got this to Jeannie in PDF form. Jeannie, do you have an ETA and when you might be able to have that up on the website? Might that be tomorrow or the next day?
It will be up tomorrow.
Okay, awesome. All right. So obviously there's a lot of detail to unpack there. Everybody will want to do that and, and the, it'll be available for people to go into. ZBA board members, I'd like to continue this hearing to another date. So that we can continue to talk about it. Had we been talking about March 12th for the non-ZBA hearing, Jeannie? Was that the date that was on the table?
That's the only one I had heard from was Zach, I believe.
Okay. Zach, could you do a, Zach McBride, could you do a ZBA meeting March 12th?
I'm just checking my calendar. Give me one.
Sure.
It's a Tuesday?
I just don't know if I'm traveling yet. Let me just.
Yep, yep. Give the man a chance.
I had to restart everything, you know, when you have, I'm sure, I'm sure all you lawyers know when you have, you know, 10,000 documents open at some point, you can't handle it.
And then the firm system decides to argue with every other system on the planet. That's what happens to me.
Yeah, so sorry, Jeannie, what was the date?
Tuesday, March 12.
That should be fine. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, ZBA board members, I would entertain a motion to continue this hearing till Tuesday, March 12th, 7:00 PM.
I will make that motion, Rick.
Anybody willing to second it?
Seconded it.
All right, moved and seconded. Further discussion, ZBA members, on continuing Washington Street to Tuesday, March 12th, 7:00 PM. I don't see any. All right. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye. We'll do it by roll call. Novak votes aye.
Bitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
Bride, aye.
Okay, for, for, for zip, hearing is continued to Tuesday, March 12th.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes, Ms. Guthrie.
That night, you're gonna have a petition for the new owners for heritage plus two renewals. So we will have those first and then continue the hearing?
We will, we will, we will, we will run those, we will run those ahead. So people on this may have to sort of log in and watch for when it comes up.
All right, thank you.
I'm assuming the renewals are non-controversial. Who, what's renewing?
Ed Rose, Rose's Automotive Motive and the office building, the professional building at 18 North Main. They're easy.
Those are, those are usually not controversial and, you know, the heritage will be what it'll be.
Right, okay.
All right. Okay. So now, our next agenda item is deliberations on the Greenwood Street project. People who were paying attention to that, and there were many, noticed that we closed our hearing on that, on the night of February 5th, if I have it correctly. So the hearing is closed and I want to point out, because people keep sending things in, that the board's ability to take new data, new information is, is, is foreclosed. So for example, if one of you had a fabulous traffic study showing that these four houses on Greenwood Street would be a traffic disaster, and you wanted to submit it, well, you could go ahead and submit it, but the board could not weigh it at all. We'd be required to disregard that because it was submitted after the hearing was closed. You know, it might be of interest to you and your neighbors, but we're not allowed to consider it. In general, what the board has done in deliberations, I mean, we're required to do them in, in, in open meetings so that people can see what we're doing and that we're not making some backroom deal or whatever, whatever we might be doing. We have, in general, allowed very, very limited comment during our deliberations, but only of the type of gee, you're discussing the septic plan from December, and actually the correct septic plan is the one from January. Sort of facts that are on the table, were put on the table during the hearing period. And that the, and that the board is mistakenly discussing the wrong plan or whatever. So those sort of ministerial corrections, we've generally taken and allowed. And I know Jonathan, you've been in on a lot of those. If the, if the other newer board members object, we can stop doing that, but I found it helpful to the process. These are big confusing projects and we're human and we make mistakes. So Zach, Todd, what do you think?
Yeah, I don't, I don't take exception to continuing that.
No, I mean, as long as, I guess, as long as, you know, the applicant has the opportunity to, if, if we're being told incorrect information in the applicant's perspective, that he has the opportunity to butt, but.
Right, right. And that brings me to my second point, which is it's not an opportunity for people to re-argue things.
No, no, just, just whether or not the plan, right plan or, or.
Right, 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 right. Ministerial factual issues. Okay, and so I think that's all we'll say about that for now. All right, so we closed on the 5th. We need to render a decision under the regulations 40 days from February 5th. So that'll be in, in, in early March. And then we need to file our decision 14 days after that. So we have to move through this process fairly briskly. It would be nice if we had a board member who would be willing to be sort of the drafting honcho on this one. The bait I can offer is that if you're the drafting honcho on this one, you don't have to be the drafting honcho on the farms.
I will throw my hat in the ring to be the secretary on this one.
All right, well, is there going to be stiff, stiff competition to be the drafting person on this one? No, I'm not seeing a lot. Okay, Zach, you win. And I believe, Jeannie's checked this, I believe you get support from town council on this. I think they've helped me in writing drafting the other ones. So there are, there are not only prior forums we've used within the town, but I think town council will help you. And there is, as Haverty will, will point out, there's a lot of it that's, that's sort of not boilerplate, but compelled text as to how the 40B stuff works.
Yeah, I'll connect with Jeannie on any examples we can use to expedite this process.
Right, all right, so. All right, so now I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about some sort of threshold issues on Greenwood Street. We heard arguments from various people at the end of the Greenwood Street discussion that Washington Street was really another phase of the same project. And Jonathan, I don't know if you've looked into the regulations on this, or Zach, if you have, or Todd, if you have, there's no, lawyers have no monopoly on bright ideas. It didn't seem to me that it's actually the same project under the 40B regulations.
I have not looked at that question, Rick.
Okay, so I think, I think for now, I'll, I'll just put that, put that out there as sort of a tentative chair's suggestion that maybe this is not a phased project. We did discuss very briefly last time whether it is a so-called related project. And I know Mr. Haverty felt strongly that it was not, and maybe he's right. Again, I haven't really unpacked the regulations on that one. Has anyone else taken a careful look at that? And the answer can be no.
Unfortunately, no.
Okay, all right. But then again, I think we just put that, put that on the table as a, as a potential issue to be looked at. I think a an important issue in our discussion of Greenwood is going to be the deed restrictions. And I don't know how much time you fellows have spent on this, but, but, but here's how that works. There are so-called Title V acres, which instead of being 43,560 square feet, are for exactly 40,000 square feet. Why? Because that's what the regulations say. And you can only have certain nitrate loading of, I think it's 440 gallons per day on that 40,000 square feet. And that's where all this nitrate loading that we see in all of these 40Bs comes up. Now, one of the proposals for Greenwood, and in many of them, is that, well, even though applying the so-called regular math of Title V, there would be more than 440 gallons per day by counting bedrooms. The developer wants to deed restrict down to a lower number. So take a house that might buy the regular count, have six bedrooms. They want to deed restrict it down to four bedrooms. And that's the proposal here. It's, it's, it's well-written in the waivers. They did a good job of calling out what they wanted us to do. But the question is whether we should and can safely put these much larger houses on lots that are already half the size that is in the zoning. This is a two-acre zone.
I have a follow-up question before you go too down.
No, please, please, please go ahead.
I guess the question is, can we, from, just from a procedural standpoint, you know, what is, where does that leave us, right? So if we don't grant the waiver, we can't say build it this way, right? We can only deny, is this sort of how this process works, right? We can only deny what's proposed to us. We cannot necessarily condition or prescribe, you know, build a third cupola on the side of the house facing east, right? I mean, we can't say anything like that. We can only accept or reject in a binary fashion what is proposed.
Not, smart question. It's not quite that clear cut. We can accept as proposed, we can deny as proposed, or we can accept with conditions. And one of the conditions might be find a way to get, make those buildings smaller, get that bedroom count down. Get the nitrate loading down. But, but that'll be a, that'll be a, that'll be a tricky issue.
And is it, has, in your experience, has, has the issue been tested where we say you shall not, you know, you, you can't finish the attic, you can't finish the basement because if you build it, they will come, right? Is that, has that been tested to the best of your knowledge, not specific?
Yes, yes. We actually did not rehearse this, everybody. But, but, but that's actually another very smart question. And in the case of the fields at Sherburne and 59 North Main Street, which I think is called the Villages. Those are both 40Bs. And in each of those cases, there were structures which would have had, under sort of normal bedroom counts, three bedrooms. They were deed restricted down to two.
And were these age, were these age-restricted developments?
Well, certainly the Fields was not, and I don't think, I don't think 59 North Main was either. And, and, and by the way, for Title V purposes, the, I don't think was, the age restriction was mattered. So, so, so yes, it has been tested. Yes, it's been enforced in two circulations in our town, both of which were condominiums, which is key because you get a little more control, and both of which the spaces were unfinished.
They were unfinished, they were left unfinished. They were unfinished, they were left unfinished, so there's a deed restriction. And the subject space was left unfinished.
Correct, but that, that was part of the deed restriction was, I know you want to finish off your basement and you can't.
Okay.
Uh, ju- just like a lot of us in town, uh, uh, my, my former home at Hollis Street. I had a great building over a garage I built nineteen eighty-seven, and after I built it, I found I could never finish it. Because I was gonna blow up my, uh, my septic compliance. And on that lot, I had no, go ahead.
I say I'm intimately aware with room counts.
Uh, okay.
Having built a house.
Many of us are.
Not two, not two years ago, um, I, I have bedrooms I didn't know that I had, so it's a good thing my septic is big enough, so.
Right, right. Um, okay, so, uh. That's just gonna be a live and important, I'm just flagging it as a live and important issue we're gonna have to parse through here. Um. And then having, having, having sort of flagged those, those big ticket issues, I sort of wanted to. All my, my board members. What are your sort of overall feelings on Greenwood Street? You, you heard everything everybody said at the hearings, um. Do you think it should be denied? And if so, why? Cause we have to have very good reasons. Um, do you think it should be approved as, as, as proposed? Then you don't really have to justify that. It'd be nice if you said so, and, and if you think maybe it should be approved with conditions. Uh, maybe, maybe some initial thoughts. Nobody's just stopped, um, some initial thoughts of, of, of what the right path through the thicket is here. And Zach, since you have so many ideas, I'm gonna call on you first.
Uh, I thought that meant I get to throw the hot potato to someone else, um. I mean, I, I guess as proposed, I would, I would deny as proposed without conditions. Uh, but I definitely have concerns about some of the design. I haven't looked at the plans in terms of well distances and other Board of Health requested waivers. I'm. Sort of catching up on, on all the materials and getting into the weeds, so. Um, I think my, at a high level, you know, I look at these as, as single family homes. I don't look as, I don't look at the. Uh, you know, point one acre reduction in lot size to be on its face, uh, significant. Unless, you know, other Board of Health regulations are, um, you know, sort of reduced.
Zach, I believe the lot size reduction is more significant than that.
Yeah.
One point one acres roughly round figures.
Per lot.
Per lot.
So I, 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 and.
It's a two acre zone.
Okay, so I, that was my mistake. I thought it was a one acre zoning in that neighborhood.
Again, just, just for clarification.
Please, no, I appreciate.
Pardon the interruption.
Appreciate that. No, I think. I think that does, that does play into sort of, you know, the larger, uh. Water quality in the town, uh, with respect to, you know. Uh, the constitutionality of, of zoning laws, right, based on a health and safety basis, uh, Rick. So unless, uh, I can go back to my law school days, right? So I think, you know, there's a presumption that the zoning laws are there for the health and safety. Um, I think, so, you know, aside from that issue, which I guess I won't be dis- as, as dismissive of, thank you, Todd, um. I think my primary concern is, um. You know, the local regulations with respect to well distances, septic size, things of that nature, distances, distances to other wells and other septics. Um, down gradient regulations, things of that nature. I mean, I see that there are wetlands immediately behind it, um. So I think that, um, you know, potentially. Plays into any waivers we're seeking, they're seeking there.
Okay, alright, so. You, you're, you're, you're thinking about it and haven't formed a completely baked view yet, like, as, 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 as you should. Um, Todd, Todd, where are you? Or no, Jonathan, sorry, you, you lit up.
Excuse me, I was clearing my throat, um.
Too bad, now you gotta talk.
Well, I, um. Have to say that, uh. My largest concern at this point is the impact of the, the project on, uh, Washington Street. And, uh, what impact that would have on, on the, the four homes on Greenwood and the, the water quality and the. And so that issue, uh. You've highlighted as a legal issue, which we have to take a closer look at. But I, I'm very concerned about the impact. To me, these are. Factually, I'm not sure legally, but factually, they are related projects. Mr. Murchison is, uh. One of the people controlling both. And, uh, the. The timing of doing Greenwood first versus, uh, the larger project. Was a decision that was made. Uh, and I. Don't believe that the applicant gave us any information whatsoever. On the impact of the. Uh, forty unit apartment building. On these lots, these smaller lots and the water quality and the runoff. Issues, nitrate levels, et cetera, so. That's. That's really my concern, so I. I don't have a warm and fuzzy feeling about this project. If you've got a category warm and fuzzy in your straw poll.
We're, 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 we're deliberating, we're talking, that's. It's, it's, it's all good. Mr. Labby.
Yes, uh. So I guess I kind of have three, three thoughts on this, two of which are going to be a repeat of what's already been. Said by my fellow board members, um, first is, uh. Well versus septic setbacks and local regulation is there for public safety. Uh. I, I, I too would have to presume the constitutionality of those, uh, regulations, otherwise what, how are we able to have them? Um, here in town for market rate homes. And so proximity to wells of neighbors on Greenwood, uh, is, is a concern. One, uh, two, in particular, uh, the larger high density project, um, abutting. On Washington, um, that was introduced, uh, earlier this evening, that is, uh, an incremental concern. And one that quite frankly is quite difficult for us to quantify. Uh, because the aforementioned reasons, we simply don't have all of the information, uh, and we haven't had time to, um. Think about it in the greater context of things, whether that was deliberate or not, and sequence wise, don't know, um. So those are the two, two concerns that I have that I think have already been, uh, uh, voiced. I, my third one is kind of going back to the deed restricting conversation. Uh, for me, a deed restriction. If you were to put one in place for a home that has finished space in areas that you are. Attempting to say cannot be used as bedrooms. I strongly question the efficacy of that path. Uh, I would feel much more comfortable having those spaces not be finished. Uh. This way you're, you're setting up more, uh, regulatory thresholds locally, uh, by way of. Um, uh, building permits, uh, Board of Health approvals, if someone were to go out and. Finish those additional spaces in one's home. Um, of course, under current regulation, town regulation, that would then be prevented. Uh, I think that, that is a safer path than having a deed restriction on space that is finished. And whether private or not, could be very easily made. Very private with a handyman with no permit. Um, or someone who just doesn't value privacy to the same extent that maybe we've defined a bedroom, um. So I, I do have considerable concerns with that and the efficacy of a, of a deed restriction. When space is already built out and finished, um, and we simply say that it's an office and can never be used as a bedroom. I just don't know if that's effective or enforceable.
They're sort of looking at these units as essentially single family homes, I think, you know. The Sherborne regulations should apply in as many respects as possible, I guess, as the sort of ethos I'm looking at it. The lens through which I'm looking at it.
Right, um. Okay, and so, again, it won't surprise you that a lot of the themes that bother me are the same ones that sort of bothered you guys, um. Under forty B, we're supposed to strain to try to find appro- approval if, if we can, um, um, but. But these were, this is a two acre zoned area. And there would be two houses, not four houses, under a conventional development. And if those were two six bedroom houses. The same size that are designed here, that would be twelve bedrooms of septic going into this four acres. Instead, we're being asked to approve, um. Three six bedroom houses, so that's eighteen plus another actual four bedroom house, so that's twenty-two. So, that's another ten bedrooms. And, uh, I'm not sure, I, I, I like the idea either for the, for their water quality or for their neighbor's water quality of essentially. More than doubling the nitrate load that you'd have in a conventional development, that. You know, I, I've been a real estate lawyer my whole life, and one of the things we learned is, is contaminated molecules, they don't really respect property lines very much at all. Or, or laws, they just go where they want to go, and, um, and, and so. Uh, I, I'm, I, I, I am concerned about the nitrate loading, particularly, um, if you add in. Jonathan Fitch's, uh, issue of. Gee, this is not in a vacuum. On the other side of the property line is, uh, are the forty units. Of, of deeply affordable, and that'll have a septic system too, and what happens when you put all of that septic together? In this one fourteen acre box or eighteen acre box or whatever it is. So, I'm, I'm open minded, but I'm, but I'm troubled by that, um.
We haven't gotten anything from the developer on that, Rick.
What, on, 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 how, how the two, right, and I, and I think. And, and, and we invited it while the hearing was open and we didn't get it, and it seems to me that's.
That's right.
You, 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 you're the litigator, but I think you guys would call that probative. Some word like that, uh, and so, but that's right, you doesn't have to.
No.
Um, that, that was, that was, that was a legitimate, uh, 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 change, but I. It, I don't think we should necessarily assume it's gonna come out swell when you add it all up. And, and my concern, even, even if it does come out swell when you add it all up is. This is just four acres. And you're, you're putting. A twenty-two bedrooms on it effectively. Under a legitimate count and saying, well, we'll deed restrict that down, and suddenly the toilets won't be flushed and the nitrates won't be there. As Todd says, I don't necessarily buy it.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of feel like if you build it, they'll come. I mean, that's just the way that it is. If it exists, it's gonna be filled, um, unfortunately, that's the nature of. I think human houses, uh, we fill it with one thing or another, so, um.
Right, and, 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 and we did hear Deshaun Wang make, make the other argument, which is. A lot of these very large houses don't have very many humans in them. But you, you, you can't, you can't build your septic system based on that.
It, it, it's not our place to project how large of a family is going to be purchasing a home. Any one individual or company could buy these homes, market rate homes of the ones being produced. We have no way of knowing that or presuming that or anticipating that.
Correct, correct, and, and, and as you say, if someone moved in and said, guess what, I have a very large family, I have. My wife and I and our eight children. Nobody on this board has any business telling them how big a family they should have.
Nope, nor, nor, nor do we have any right, and nor do I want any right to go into someone's home. And see how those spaces are being used, the ones that have been finished and were finished when they close and purchase the home.
Right, right, there, there, there's, there's always with these deed restrictions and all the septic stuff, there's always. An enforcement issue that we have to figure out both the fairness and the practicality of.
And, and when it comes to something as important as public health in our town. I think we need to very seriously vet the efficacy of the restrictions that we put in place in defense of public safety.
Okay, Joni Murphy, you have your hand up.
I'm just. Yep, just as a, just as a factual matter, I believe the lot is just under four acres, so it could really only accommodate one house under current rules.
Okay, fair enough. Um, and you know, may, maybe in drawing his lot lines, he could have found. Another. You know, one tenth of an acre to get over four, but yeah, okay, fa- fair enough. The, the point is, it's, it's, it's. Under our current zoning, even if it were. Two, four full acres, there would be two houses, not four.
Uh, yeah, you, you, you're, you're, you're bath, your bathroom or bedroom count, your bedroom count in comparison, Rick. Is a best case scenario, yeah, or sorry, um, right, yes, right, yeah.
Are these, are these mounted septic systems or are they, uh, to, to Sherborne reg? Do we know?
I, well, it, 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 it's in the, um, I believe that they complied. With our regs other than setback room count, things like that, to which the Board of Health objected. But I think the Board of Health was saying, uh, uh, we can take a look, cause the Board of Health gave us a detailed report that came in during our, during our last hearing. But I believe what the Board of Health said was, assuming you're gonna allow these lot sizes and these room counts. These are well-designed systems. I think that's where they came out. We can read it for ourselves. But, but they very clearly, at least to my read, and again, you can read it for yourself, don't take my word for it. Objected to the, to the room count and the, uh, and the, and the lot sizes. For, for just these, for just these reasons. Okay. There anything else you guys want to take up on this tonight, or do we want to all go back and do our homework and, and read all the submissions? Uh. And, and think about it, because I certainly need to do that before I get any further. I just sort of wanted to. Get a sense of what, what you, you fellows were thinking. Zach, you think, you look thoughtful.
Um, in terms of the legal questions you posed with respect to related versus phased. Project, um, is that something, you know, what? Out of, how do, how do you recommend we proceed as a board with respect to those legal questions?
I think, uh, as to phasing and whether or not they're related projects. I will probably invite Mr. Haverty to give us his views. I think I know where those will come out. Um, but I also intend to run those past town council and think about it a little bit myself, so. Classic, I didn't think much of Reagan as a president, but his trust but verify concept is one I do like.
Um.
I agree.
Mr. Haverty, you're listening, you're gonna send us something, maybe a short letter?
Yeah, I can certainly send something.
That'd be great, thank you very much. Do you, do you have a different, uh, attack on those in mind, Zach?
No.
Okay. Okay. Unless you have other suggestions, gents, I'd suggest that we think hard about this, read everything. And come back and talk about it. Well, I was gonna suggest March tw- March twelfth, but Genie, you've already told me I've sort of packed March twelfth a little too, too, uh, too tightly, right?
Well, you have a, you have a meeting scheduled for February twenty-sixth.
That's not a bad idea. Could you guys be ready to talk about this further on the twenty-sixth? After the other one?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, in that case, I'd entertain a motion to continue the deliberations on Greenwood Street until February twenty-sixth. At seven PM or such other time as we move away from the continued farm road here.
Okay.
Okay, so our second.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded for the discussion on the motion to continue to February twenty-sixth. Not March twelfth, February twenty-sixth. Seeing none, uh, okay, roll call vote, um. No backvotes, aye.
Bitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
McBride, aye.
Alright, motion carries for zip, we're continued, um. Other boards that are here, do you wish to close?
Absolutely, we do. So I have a motion from the select board to, uh, adjourn our meeting. Or close our meeting.
Uh, yes, I so moved.
You second that, Stephen?
Second.
Alright, uh, roll call, Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And I am I as well. Thank you, Rick.
All right, you're out, thank you, um, okay, um. ZBA members or even even anybody, are there other matters we should be discussing tonight before the ZBA adjourns? Genie, I think you've been keeping us in line on what we gotta. We gotta, we gotta deal with, we got meetings on the, uh, twelfth and the twenty sixth as of now.
Right.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll thank the development team again for an extremely cr- crisp and clear and fast. Presentation on Washington Street. We'll look forward to talking with you further on Washington Street, and we'll look forward to talking with each other. More on deliberations on, um, Greenwood Street. So have have, oh, I'm sorry, Paul, yes?
I just said, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, you're you're more than welcome, as always, Paul. All right, I'd entertain a motion to have the ZBA adjourn.
So I'm moving that we adjourn.
So second?
Seconded.
All right, move and seconded the ZBA adjourn. It's seven fifty one, what will the rest of you do with your evening? Well, that'll be up to you. Okay, move and seconded, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, voting by roll call, Novak votes aye.
Pitch aye.
Labby aye.
McBride aye.
All right, thank you all very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good night.